Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, September 27th, 2021. The time is now 6:00 PM. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Next is public announcements. Alex Hagerty, do you have any?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. Just one.
Okay.
The Abington Health Department, in collaboration with the Abington Board of Health and the Plymouth County Suicide Prevention Coalition, will be offering a free youth mental health first aid training this Friday, October 1st, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the Abington Public Library. The course gives people the skills to help someone who is developing a mental health problem or experiencing mental health crisis. The evidence behind the program demonstrates that it does build mental health literacy, helping the public identify, understand, and respond to the signs of mental illness. Topics of discussion will include depression and mood disorders, anxiety disorders, trauma, psychosis, and substance use disorders. The training is an eight-hour session and extremely helpful to those who want to help those in need. The training is highly recommended for adults 18 years and older who work professionally with students and youth. Residents can sign up for this free training at the Health Department website, and it's also on my social media, and I know it's on mics as well. If you have any questions, please call the Health Office at 781-982-2119. I want to extend my appreciation to the Health Department, the Board of Health, the Public Library, and the Plymouth County Suicide Prevention Coalition for making this life-saving aid training possible. The work that they do, doing to educate our community on how we can aid those struggling with mental health disorders, is nothing short of commendable. As I spoke about it when I served on the Abington Board of Health last year, not last November, I am an attempted suicide survivor. Back when, in the summer of 2010, I attempted to take my own life. So this issue is extremely personal for me. Talking about mental health is challenging, but because of someone took the seconds to reach out a helping hand to me, I'm alive today. The training that the town of Abington is offering on October 1st will be beneficial to those who may just save a life as a result. I encourage residents to register and attend the Youth Mental Health First Aid Training Help Save Lives. That's all I have for announcements, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mike, any announcements?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Alex?
Yes, I just want to thank, excuse me, thank the residents and other people that came to the fire truck restoration fundraiser the other night. It wasn't as big as we had hoped, but we do have some money for you tonight, Scott, to start the fund off, about $500 we raised, which I think was pretty good to start, and it was only about a week's worth of planning that went into it, so it's a start. Thank you all.
Okay. Tim?
Yeah, I do have one from the library. The library is pleased to have a Fall Story Walk at Griffin's Dairy. The book is Red Leaf, Yellow Leaf by Lois L. Hart. The story walk will be available through late October, and the library appreciates the help and support of Griffin's Dairy Committee in presenting the story walk. The purpose of it is to encourage families to enjoy a beautiful outdoor space, get some physical exercise, and to build reading or reading readiness skills by enjoying a book in a non-traditional setting. Having fun is also an important part of their purpose.
Okay. I have two announcements. The Abington High School Athletic Hall of Fame is proud to announce that the following players and contributors are nominated by the Abington High Community and selected to be honored as the next slate of inductees to be inducted into the AHSF Athletic Hall of Fame. The 2002 Abington High School Football Team, Joseph D. Antonio Jr., AHS 86; Cecilia Baumdair Atkins, AHS 84; Richard Dick White, AHS 78; Robert Bob Bancroft, AHS 66; and Charles Lindy Hanson, AHS 45. The Hall of Fame induction ceremony is scheduled for Sunday, November 21st at 1:00 PM. It's in the Abington Middle High School Auditorium. Tickets are $25 each, and they are now available. Please call the Hall of Fame Committee, please call the Hall of Fame Committee member Sean Riley at 781-690-3185, or member Eileen Walls at 781-985-6123 for more information. And we also would like to announce that we are going to be having a Police Chief swearing-in ceremony. So on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, you are hereby invited to the official swearing-in ceremony for Police Chief David Del Papa. This will be held on Wednesday, October 13th, at the Abington Senior Center, which is at 441 Summer Street, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. That's all I have for public announcements. So for public comments, we're going to have public comment after executive session tonight. The first thing on the agenda is public appointments. Abington Cultural Council Fran Cronin. Are you here tonight?
No, she is not.
Okay, so in your packet, you should have the information for Fran. For the Arts Council, if you have reviewed it or not, but I will entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to appoint Fran Cronin to the Arts Council.
I'll second.
You have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? All right, so we have one item before the Board that was not reasonably anticipated 48 hours prior to this meeting, and that is appointing council to respond to three open-metin law complaints the town received related to our meeting on August 23rd, 2021. I think the Board members, we all received them. Would one of the members, I'll entertain a motion, which would be to appoint council to respond to these complaints.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, first item on the agenda is vote to rescind, first item on the agenda is vote to rescind the removal and suspension of several members of the Conservation Commission, Karen Bowen, Joian, Dimak Harding, Jim Dombrowski, and Lynn Mullen. The Board received a letter indicating that there was a lack of proper notice to these officials. Upon review of the town charter and upon consultation with town council, these officials are entitled to a hearing. We plan to have this hearing in executive session tonight, and all parties have been properly noticed and provided a copy of the town charter. With that being said, I will entertain a motion.
Excuse me, can I ask a question?
Not at this time.
We're going to have a public comment.
We'll have the public comment after the executive session.
I'd like to speak out in behalf of the people that have been...
We have the public comment after executive session tonight.
And we'll be able to...
You'll have a chance then to speak.
We'll be able to speak on the rescinding.
You cannot speak on the executive session, but we will have public comment after we come out of the executive session.
Okay, is our understanding, this is the private president?
Sir, this is an executive session, so we've got to continue with this meeting. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to rescind the Board of Selectmen's vote on August 23rd regarding the Conservation Members.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, do we have to rescind?
That is entirely up to the way to the Board, how they want to vote tonight. We do have a motion right now, so we can...
Mr. Chairman, didn't, did we receive guidance from town council before August 23rd regarding how we were supposed to handle the process and procedure?
Scott, do you want to touch on that, or Jamie?
Neither one of us.
Yeah, I spoke with attorneys at KP Law. It was under the impression that we were following the proper procedure, but we have received this complaint, and in further review, it appears that we didn't notice them properly.
Why was it not done properly?
He followed what KP Law had told him to do.
So why, so why is KP Law telling us differently today?
I think that's another issue.
Yeah.
But, but...
So, Mr. Hagerty, that's a great point. I think there was, again, an inclination to want to have this in open session, and I think the members of the Board wanted to notice it and noticed it in open session. However, your charter specifically provides that if you're going to remove a town official, that there needs to be a hearing and specific notice, meaning that it can't just be on a general agenda. We have to actually provide them a letter with specific notice, and they have the right to a hearing. And that's due process principles at play there. So I understand that it's frustrating that now we have to right a wrong that was through no fault of the Boards. I understand that that's very frustrating and...
Yeah, no, and then that's, that's my, that's my point.
However, I do want to make sure that we give these officials proper due process. And so by rescinding this and giving them proper notice and an opportunity to be heard, which will all take place tonight in the context of a hearing and executive session, we are making sure that due process is followed in this case. And I think as public officials, we all want to make sure that we're following due process and following the charter. The charter was not followed, and so at this point, we have to make that right.
So, Jamie, could I ask, the charter calls for this to be in executive session.
So any, so the individuals can ask to make the matter be declared public.
Okay.
We have received no notice. We have received no indication that somebody wants to have it public. So having received...
You're not one of them.
You're not.
You're not one.
Sir, 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 there's, there's no public comment right now. We will have it after the executive session. The Board is deliberating at the moment. Please hold until public comment.
So we would have had to been notified if they wanted it public?
Right.
Okay.
And again, at the outset, we will ask each individual who's named if they want to declare it private public at that point in time. They can declare it public. It's up to the individuals involved.
Okay, thank you.
Just so we're clear, what due process was not followed?
So under your charter, you're required to give specific notice and a copy of the town charter in advance, okay? So you have to give them a specific, not just a general posting, which was what was done, but a specific notice to them, meaning that you would get a letter, if it was you, Mr. Hagerty, you would get a letter indicating that the town has it on the agenda to remove you from your official position. And so because it's a removal proceeding, and you're the appointing authority, you have the ability to remove somebody, which we've seen. However, before that removal or disciplinary action takes place, the individuals involved have the right to appear, and they have the right to make sure that they have their say, so to speak. So that is what we're doing tonight to make sure that that process is followed. So it's a procedural issue, but I think at the heart of it, heart of it is fundamental fairness, and I want to make sure that we all ensure that our town officials that are here tonight, that are being contemplated for removal, get that ability to make sure that they have their say. And that wasn't done the first time. They were not given specific notice, and they were not given a copy of the town charter, which is, which is called for by your town charter.
Okay. We did give, we did give them the ability to speak their, their story, which...
Right.
I guess that was one thing that we did do right.
Right.
But okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I think it's important for everybody to understand, because we want to make sure that we, as a town, are following the process and following our charter, and that's what we're, we're trying to set right tonight. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does, absolutely.
Board of, any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Four, one. All right. Next up on the agenda is executive session in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 39, Section 23B, to consider the discipline or dismissal of or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, this is going to be a roll call vote, so Alex Hagerty?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Alex Wazanson?
Aye.
Tim?
I'm sorry, I turned you up. At the end of that, you said to return to open session, right?
No, we did not, actually.
So just, I'll amend the motion to re, to say to, to return to open session.
Yes, correct, okay.
So that's my amendment.
Okay, with the amendment, Alex Hagerty?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Alex Wazanson?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And Chairman says aye, we are now in executive session. We're back in open session. If one quick announcement, as you are aware, on the agenda for executive session was to contemplate a discipline of four members of the Conservation Commission. After an administrative hearing, including evidence presented on behalf of the officials involved, the Board has voted the following. With respect to Ms. Mullen, no discipline was imposed. With respect to Mr. Dombrowski, Ms. Bowen, and Ms. Mullen, the Board voted to remove all three members. I understand that members of the public may have been frustrated by this matter being held in executive session. As a Board, we must always balance the public's right to know against any statutory rights of those accused. Here, the individuals had the opportunity to request that the matter be declared public. No request was made. The Board will respect the individuals' decisions. So at this time, I will open up public comment. If anyone has anything to say, you can step up to the podium, state your name and address.
Rick Collins, I don't know if I went to Abington News or 74 Orange or whatever. What were the votes of the decisions?
It was a 4-1 vote.
4-1 vote?
I don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, it was, if I may, it was 5-0 on Mr. Dombrowski, and it was 4-1 on the other two.
Who was on no votes?
Mr. Dombrowski was 5-0, Ms. Bowen was 4-1, Ms. Dimak Harding was 4-1.
Who were the no votes?
There was one no vote on the Board, and that was Mr. Chapin with the no votes.
And, okay. What was the, I mean, there's specific reasons laid out in the town charter as to reason for dismissal. What was the one cited?
We're not discussing any further.
Executive session, so we can't discuss.
Executive session, when the minutes are released.
It's over now.
Right, but the minutes have not been released yet.
We can approve the minutes.
So you're not going to tell the public why they were dismissed?
We have to respect...
We will, we just can't right now.
We have to respect their wishes. They wanted the hearing to be, or disciplinary hearing to be in private, not public.
Okay, very good.
So when the minutes are accepted, then we'll release them.
Okay. Step right up, state your name and address.
My name is Dan Broman. I'm at 222 Linwood Street in Abington. And now you're saying that Joian and, Joian and Karen and Jim are dismissed from the Conservation Commission?
That is correct. That's a statement I made.
Okay, well, this is what I wanted to say before you made your decision. For the last 10 years, Marilyn and I have done a public service website, e-widening.com, and we shine a spotlight on environmental heroes, people who are caring for the earth. Jim Dombrowski and Karen Bowen and Joe Harding are the kind of people we spotlight. They have a high commitment to protecting and conserving the environment. Jim knows more about the rules and regulations and laws protecting the environment than anyone I know, and many people agree with me. Karen Bowen is an untiring defender of our forests and our wetlands, and she's worked on other town committees. Joe Harding has a calm, strong presence, standing up for her beliefs. She has a commitment to taking care of the earth. These three very outstanding and concerned citizens know what conservation means. They are an asset to our town and our community. They are an asset to the protection of the land here in Abington. These three Conservation Commission members are committed to protecting our forests, wetlands, rivers, our drinking water, and the health of our town's environment, which in turn protects the health of our town's residents. I heard Mr. Montgomery give an open invitation to the Conservation Commission, at a Conservation Commission meeting, to come to his property anytime. Jim, Karen, and Joe have done nothing to deserve what you, Selectmen, have just done. As a citizen of Abington, I feel this action should be rescinded. Jim and Karen and Joe should be reinstated to the Conservation Commission as full voting members. But obviously, you have made your decision behind closed doors, and so I don't have to agree with it.
With all due respect, Mr. Brailman...
Yes.
It was not our decision to do it in executive session. That was their choice.
It wasn't your decision to let them go?
We're not going to get back and forth.
To executive session.
It was, it was...
To do it in executive session was their decision.
They had the opportunity to come in public session. They chose not to.
Okay.
Thank you for your comment. I appreciate it. Is any, any further comments from the...
Okay.
Okay. Hearing no further comments. Next agenda item is vote to approve the minutes, let me see, of September 13th, 2021.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to amend the meeting minutes of September 13th, 2021, just to include comments, oh, pardon, excuse me, a question that I asked of Town Manager Scott Lambiase. Mr. Hagerty asked Town Manager about the seven businesses' statuses on 022 Helm Street and their registration status, and then Town Manager stated he will get back to Mr. Hagerty, and we have followed up on that, but that's aside from my, my amending of the minutes of the September 13th meeting.
Is that your motion with the amended?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hold, pose? Next agenda item is discussion and possible vote regarding marijuana community host agreement with Bean Collective LLC, proposal for 1431 Bedford Street. Okay, at this time, Selectmen Wazanson is recusing himself.
All right, gentlemen, we have Donald Rodriguez here with Bean Collective LLC. He approached me for the fifth and final host community agreement. They do have a facility that is in the overlay district. They, I gave them our standard agreement that we worked through the language with and the, all requirements with KP Law. They've agreed to everything. They have no, no request for any changes, and they have shown that they have the financial means to get this project underway, so I'm going to let Mr. Rodriguez, if you want to come up to the microphone, just identify yourself, and you can, I think everybody got some of the supplemental information today.
Hi, everyone. This reminds me a little of the emotional board in the Army. I'm Donald Rodriguez with Bean Collective LLC. We are a veteran-owned, social equity delivery operator. What this means is that we can purchase and acquire products, marijuana products, from licensed marijuana cultivators as well as producers, and we can purchase those wholesale, list those products on our website, and sell those products directly to our consumers who are previously registered via our website. We'll have the customers register on our website. Their registration and identification will be checked upon the delivery as well as, once they make the actual order. We plan on hiring 17 to 21 employees. We want to have a minimum of 50% of those employees be Abington residents. We'll give hiring preference to veterans and also those who have been affected by the war on drugs. All packages will come with educational materials from our facility. We'll get with the Police Chief to see if he wants us to put anything in there as well. We plan on doing an annual donation of a minimum of $5,000 to some local youth or some charitable, and, yeah, we agreed to the 3% and the other local fees. Any questions? Feel free to ask.
So just clarifying, you're doing all straight delivery, no retail, no walk-in sales?
Yes, sir.
So it will be, you'll order online?
Yes, sir.
You'll send out drivers to deliver it? You're not cultivating or manufacturing?
Yes, sir.
You're buying wholesale and storing and then selling?
Yes, sir.
And you expect to need that many employees?
Eventually. Organically, we'll grow into that.
So when you open, how many do you think you'll open with?
We'll, we'll have about 12, we'll actually start about around 14 to 15 employees.
That many?
The reason being is, we plan on having five cars. Each car has to have two drivers, a delivery agent as well as a driver, per regulation, so...
That's great, that you're going to have that many people.
So there'll be all, you'll own all the vehicles?
Yes, sir.
And will they be, do they have to be, have like your name on the side or anything?
No, all unmarked vehicles will be using Toyota Priuses. All vehicles will also be leaving in shifts rather than on the spot ordering to reduce traffic as well.
What are the license plate of those vehicles?
Man, you're good.
They'll all be stored onsite when not in use?
Yes, sir.
And what, I mean, do you have a, an idea of what the shifts would be, or?
We want to do morning, afternoon, and then closer around 5, 6:00 PM, so they can be off the road by 9:00 per regulation.
So they'll all be overlapping shifts, but throughout the day from...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And do you have any idea of, you know, deliveries? Will there be, to your facility, will, will there be a lot of deliveries, or is it going to be regulated to, you know, certain times a week, or?
Sure, we'll, we'll keep it regulated. We'll most likely have some sort of bi-weekly inventory system where we have all deliveries come on on a specific day.
Okay.
And I just want to say thank you for your service.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And as far as the facility, that's a, is that the...
Is it currently the social terminal?
Yes, sir.
One of the bays?
So where would it be, would it be just one bay, or could you kind of describe what it'll be?
We'll actually have about 12,000 square feet, about five square, but I think it was about five bay doors.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, I mean, will it be like toes the front or the back? Do you not know yet, or?
We're still, yeah, the car base. We're still trying to figure out how we'll have operations set up there. We want to obviously get through this part first, but...
Absolutely.
For security reasons, I'm thinking we will probably most likely have the cars pull in and only have one exfil for the vehicles, just so we can keep one door secure rather than watching all five.
Okay. Anything else from the Board?
No further questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the host community agreement for, sorry, I don't, I won't call you Mr. Bean, but that would be appropriate. With Bean, Bean Collective LLC. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we have, so unanimous, 4-0, we have one recusal.
I will take something back to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
By the way, I don't know if you've met.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Next on the agenda, operational update. Adam Gunn, our Veteran Services Officer. Adam, thank you for waiting.
Yeah, thanks, Adam.
Adam, thank you for clearing the room.
Absolutely. I love being able to do that. Thank you for having me here tonight and for allowing me to spend a few minutes to update you and whoever's still watching on some of the things that are going on in my veteran world here. This year, as you know, the Abington Veteran Organizations, the American Legion, VFW, and Post Two are jointly hosting the 68th Annual Tri-Town Veterans Day Parade this year, technically 67, because we had to forego last year due to COVID. So we will be holding it here in Abington. That is the plan moving forward. Everyone is invited to... Everyone is invited to join on Thursday, November 11th. The 10:00 a.m. is the step-off of the parade. It's the same parade schedule as last year, starting off at the police station, and the parade route is listed on the town's website. Awards will be presented to the Best Police and Fire Honor Guards, military, veteran, and color guards, youth groups, and floats, so we'll see what Abington can bring to the table. The parade route, as I said, is the same. Please come out and show your support for the veterans of this community. Help make this a fun day and keep this long-lasting tradition, Abington tradition alive. None of these veteran-based organizations would even be possible without our local veteran organizations. So to anyone watching, if you've ever thought about joining one of these organizations, please reach out. We need your support now more than ever. Speaking of Veterans Day, Tony Moquinn, our new website and social media coordinator, is helping advertise Abington businesses who plan to show their appreciation on Veterans Day. So if you're the owner of an Abington business and are offering a Veterans Day discount, please reach out to Tony via email at T Moquinn, T M O Q U I N, at abingtonma.gov so we can help support you. Thank you again for honoring the sacrifices our veterans have made. We're finally getting back to holding monthly veteran lunches at the Senior Center on the first Wednesday of every month from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00. Next Wednesday, October 6th, having an organization called Operation American Soldier, and they're going to be joining us, and we'll be writing letters with those who show up to the luncheon to troops overseas. Operation American Soldier proudly supports all branches of the U.S. Armed Forces, and the letters written will be added to care packages across the globe. For anybody thinking about attending, feel free to bring a photo of your service to share the group. We tell stories, talk about what's happening in the world, and I'm there to answer and help guide them through any benefit questions or things they may need help with. On November 3rd, the Wednesday prior to Veterans Day, we'll be holding a special Veterans Day luncheon from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 with a few activities, guest speakers, and for those veterans that care to join us, if you can, we're encouraging you bring a photo from your service, and also if you can, wear your uniform. Should be a fun event. I can't thank Suzanne enough, the Director of Abington's Council on Aging, for hosting and providing all these events for me. I also can't thank enough for the community support I have with the volunteers that reach out and offer their assistance. And lastly, and most importantly, if you're a veteran who served in Afghanistan or other wars and are currently experiencing challenging emotions related to the recent withdrawal, just know that it's normal. Help is available, now more than ever, so please don't keep trying to hide what you're going through. VA Helpline is available. Stop it at my office, email me, and we can talk about the kind of services that are available to you. You're not alone. Any questions?
Thank you. The Veterans Luncheon on November 3rd, I know you didn't say it, but is it the Senior Center as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Awesome. And again, I just want to say thank you for everything you're doing between the Cornhole Tournament, and I know this is a long-standing tradition, but, you know, everything you do is just great, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Excellent work.
Thank you, Adam. Okay, item number six, vote to establish a gift account for the fire truck restoration.
So as everyone knows, we acquired a fire truck, and now we need money to restore it. We don't know how much it's going to cost, but it's probably going to be fairly expensive. We're working on getting some pricing now. There's a possibility of the Vo-Tec taking it, but that would be about two years away before they could get it in, but we would still have to pay to restore it. So we've started fundraising for it, and I'd like to make a motion to establish a gift account for the Fire Engine Restoration Fund.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous.
And Mr. Chairman, while we're on gift accounts, could we get a list of all the gift accounts we have and the balances in them? I'm thinking that we probably, we might have gift accounts that are no longer needed, and I think it'd just be good for the board to know what's out there for gift accounts and the amounts in there.
That's pretty easy to do. Also, in regards to the fire truck restoration, we just, at the Fire Department, wanted to thank you, but also wanted to let people know that this is your endeavor.
Well, it started with Roger Woods started it, and yeah.
It's not so much the Fire Department this time.
Right.
This is Alex and Roger's pet project, so we support it and we are very appreciative of it, but we just want to let people know that there is a separation.
Right.
That's all.
Can we do it the current paint scheme? I do like the red and the black.
Red and black.
Yeah.
I think the chief would appreciate it.
Yeah.
Just a flat.
And I'm just wondering if they're going to want to use it on the next fire, you know?
Parade, definitely.
Parade, absolutely.
Parade, yeah. Okay, so item, agenda number seven, discuss liaisons for boards and committees. Again, last meeting, we had looked at, there's a lot here. We want to push it off. I think we should push this to the following meeting.
I think that's a good idea.
I have no objection to that.
Due to the time tonight.
Mr. Hagerty, do you have no objection?
No, I have no objection, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So we'll put that off for next meeting. Scott?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that brings up the schedule.
Yep. Item number eight is set the meeting schedule for October. So the first meeting would be on October 11th, which is a holiday. So do you guys want to do the 12th, which would be a Tuesday? We do have the police chief swearing in again on that Wednesday, the 13th as well.
Well, what, do we have anything now coming up for that meeting?
I'm not aware that there's any hearings.
Liaisons for boards and committees.
Well, that's my point. If that's all there is, then I don't see a problem meeting on the Tuesday night because it might not be a long meeting.
Then we just...
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. We might have some other things going on.
Yeah, I mean, nothing's come up. I'm not aware of like any hearings that we have to advertise for.
Yeah, that was my question, yeah. So I have no problem meeting on the 12th.
So we'll meet on Tuesday, the 12th. Does anyone else have any objections to that? And then the...
Do you want to do the 12th and the 18th?
Well, I think we should get back to second and fourth.
The 12th and the 25th would be...
The 12th and the 25th.
All right, so the Tuesday, the 12th, and then we'll meet Monday, the 25th at 6:30.
At 6:30. We're going back to 6:30.
Okay. Next is the Town Manager Report.
There we go. All right, so recently, we've had a lot of vacancies to fill here at Town Hall. Andrew Nokum is starting on October 12th. Andrew is going to be our new Town Accountant. Currently, Andrew is a financial analyst and a compliance control administrator for the city of Brockton. Looking forward to him coming on board, especially as we start to get into the budget season. The responsibility duties and title of Finance Director placing on Sonia Hodge. Sonia has a keen eye for detail and exceptional accounting skills, so I think her, when I transfer those duties over to her, it'll be very helpful to me again as we start this next budget process. I'd like to thank Representative Sullivan and Senator Keenan for supporting the town the last budget cycle. They were instrumental in the town receiving two earmarks. We've got notification on them this week. One of them is for $100,000 to be put towards sidewalk traffic and road repair. It's going to help out quite a bit, and John Stone was very happy to hear that we did get that. The other one was for $25,000, and this one we can use to bring in a consultant to assist the Abington Affordable Housing Trust. And we're going to be looking at center school and what we can do with that, and there's also some other properties that we're hoping to get the most out of that money. I want to thank, say thanks to Liz Shea for her help. We've been awarded the two Community Compact Grants that I've been talking about, and so I'm glad to hear that we got them. One is for $20,000. Will assist the town in our current endeavor as we move forward with website development. And the other is $25,000 that we're going to use with the capital improvement plan. So we just found out that we got them, and we're ready to move forward with them. Liz has also been working with the school department on the Green Community Grant for this year. We've been awarded over $100,000 that will be used for energy-efficient upgrades within some of the older school buildings. The Open Space Committee will have their first meeting at 5:30 Thursday evening this week here at Town Hall. It's very exciting to get this committee up and running. We have a lot of parcels for them to review and take recommendations on. I've recently been meeting with Wildlands Trust regarding a seven-acre parcel that's right on Beaver Brook. So we're looking forward to getting the process started on us taking those and preserving those. We have other additional parcels that have come up recently that look like they'd be well worth us preserving too. Fire Station Building Committee will have its first meeting since adding the new members. That's going to be on October 5th also here at Town Hall. That'll be at 6:00 p.m. And we had several Rockland Street parcels that were auctioned off as a group. They totaled about 28 acres. Proceeds would have netted about $375,000. Unfortunately, the sale had to be canceled. This was all part of our recent auction. There were defects found in the title as well as mistakes made on an engineering plan that someone else had, it wasn't something that we had put together, so it came with the property when we took it. So we're going to work on fixing that. We could consider putting the property back out for auction when we do another round or if we do another round next year. You know, there is a good amount of wetlands on this property, and I think maybe once we get the title issues cleaned up and more accurate layout of the property, we might want to actually review this with the Open Space Committee also. It does come up towards this part of the property, will come up towards land that the town already owns outside of Town Hall here. So it might be nice just to protect it. And that's it. Although I will give a, you know, two pre-announcements. Again, I want to reiterate that we are having a ceremonial swearing-in on the 13th at the Senior Center for the new police chief, so it is posted on our website, and we'll let everybody know that the public is welcome to come and attend. It will be a good time and a good chance to meet. And additionally, we are going to be doing some training for all boards and committees. We're going to try and do a joint training in November at the, we'll see if we can get the high school auditorium, but we can have all members that are on any board or any committee attend that training. It'll be, you know, specific to open meeting law and ethics. That's it.
Scott, so there's no need or no thought of doing a fall town meeting this year?
No.
Okay.
One thing, and I know Mr. Collins is in the audience, Charter Review Committee update. I was going to ask you, but...
I think I would leave that to Mr. Collins.
I believe we might have the chairman here.
Rick Collins, 74 Orange Street. I was blessed to be elected chairman of the Charter Review Commission. We are going to be meeting again this coming Thursday at 6:00 p.m. here at Town Hall. This is the start of what probably will be a lengthy process. This won't be something that we anticipate will be done in term, in time for the spring town meeting this coming year, especially if we're going to be doing, actually doing it in April. So this is going to be a 16, 18-month effort to figure this all out, and we're going to discuss more on Thursday, how to move forward in the process. But I think what is okay to say at this point is that we are going to want a lot of public involvement in the discussion, that we will have ways for people to weigh in, to submit their ideas, their concerns, areas that need to be improved, and then package those all together and see what we can do. It'll be important to realize that this isn't a comprehensive look at every town bylaw and zoning bylaw. This is specifically the town charter, and so some things that might come up might be the town bylaw. Well, that's not something that is under our purview, but we'll see what we can do and talk about and figure out and what makes sense and so forth. So we'll be, at some point, coming to this board as well as the Town Manager to find out your ideas about, does something need to be changed? If not, okay, but, you know, if we can improve something somewhere, let's have that conversation.
Okay. And I know, I mean, it'll be good to have the, I mean, how many charters have we, how many reviews have we had so far? Is one or...
One original and one review.
Right.
Well, there was a charter in 1994, and that charter basically was in effect until, well, there was probably one prior to that, but 1994. And then in 2004 was the major change in the charter. Actually, I think there was one from '76 or something like that.
You should say, with this form of government.
With this form of government started in 2004.
Okay.
2014, there were some minor changes, basically housekeeping made. So this would be the first real charter review, in-depth charter review, I think, since 2004.
And I know Mr. Sean Riley had gotten it off, you know, started, but now at this point, it probably transitioned, would it transition to you if any issues, or would it be the board if this, if the charter review had any issues or...
Well, I think it would be the Town Manager or the board.
Right, because I think Sean was saying, right, he's not part of it. He was just going to be there for the initial, and then he's out.
He's the authority.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, any assistance I can give, and obviously, we want to coordinate, like you said, anything that we have to do, but we want to coordinate getting input from the other boards. And one thing that you touched on that's very important is that this may actually lead to review and changes that would have to also be done with the bylaw section. Because as you're aware, sometimes in some of our recent issues that have come our way, it sort of bounced back and forth, one refers to the other.
And I know, I know you want to do an earlier town meeting. I think we've usually pushed it off due to budgets.
I tried to do it on time.
Well...
He's just, that's what was supposed to be.
I know.
I'm not expecting this to be ready for town.
No, no.
I think it would be the following.
Yeah, I think, and you certainly don't want to rush it.
No.
Yeah, exactly.
Start it at the earliest of all time.
Yeah, I think the last major charter adjustment might have been when we changed up the DPW and merged a bunch of those departments as well.
Yeah, that might have been in 2014. That wasn't the original 2004.
Yeah.
So those were the changes in 2014.
I think that was the major change that came out of that review.
Right, yeah. But the form of government basically was changed in 2004.
So the moderator appointed us, but, you know, the moderator doesn't have a budget to help us do anything. We need something. So obviously, the Town Manager is going to be a resource for us. We're already trying to put together a meeting with Town Council to understand best practices, how to do things, how not to, you know, get ourselves into trouble, but, you know, our Town Council works with dozens and dozens of communities around the state. There might be a community that they're aware of that does something really well that we would want to take a look at. So I would want to take use of some of that expertise.
Okay. Awesome. Well, thank you for the update. Appreciate it. Anything else from the board?
Scott, I'll touch base with you on if there's anything new coming out of the Plumbeth County Commissioner's Office or the Treasurer's Office, because when we were talking about capital planning.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great. It would be nice to, I do believe we have a meeting with the...
Well, Alex, you're the...
Yeah, there is a Zoom meeting.
Tomorrow or...
No, I think it's...
It's coming up.
Thursday.
Yeah, maybe it's Thursday at 3:00 or so.
I hope it's not tomorrow. I got another one at 2:00 o'clock.
So I'm hoping to get some more information, and certainly we'll talk about that and collaborate together, so.
Awesome. Oh, and I, just reminded me, because I'm the alternate for the old Colony Planning Committee, I, excuse me, we have a meeting on the 29th, so Wednesday, so, and I'll report back to the board and to the town, so.
Scott, it actually is tomorrow. Scott, it actually is tomorrow.
It's at 3:00 PM.
Okay.
But that's at 3:00.